All right. Call this meeting back to order. Where are we at? All right. Now, we have the lease agreement with Verizon for communication equipment in the Market Street Garage, first of one reading.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Engel cannot be here tonight, but I did want to talk to the council about this item, and I know that Ms. Schweller is here representing Verizon. This item is before you. It's a new amendment. Well, I guess it's a renewal of a lease for a five-year term for a small cell structure on the parking garage right next to this building. In your package, you're going to see there are two resolutions. Verizon would like to renew the lease and have a 15% reduction in the annual lease. Currently, it's a $9,000 revenue stream to the city. Verizon is proposing to pay $7,650 per year as part of this five-year renewal. Verizon has stated, and it is true that the state law did change, which has now increased the ability of small cell wireless facilities to locate on public structures in Virginia. And part of Verizon's justification for asking for the decrease in the rental rate is that since there are now more opportunities to locate these small cell facilities within the city of Charlottesville, that the lease rate that was proposed and agreed to in 2014 does not, in fact, represent the market rate of today. Mr. Engel's staff report indicates that he was not able to locate any market study on the actual small self wireless facility rental rate in Virginia. He is still advocating for the $9,000 per year annual rate from Verizon. But again, Verizon is pointing to legislation passed by the General Assembly that now increases the opportunities for locating these facilities. And they are maintaining that this legislation does, in fact, create market conditions, which with an increased supply should bring down the price of the lease for the small cell facility that's located on the parking garage. And again, Verizon's representative, Ms. Schweller, is here to answer any questions that the council may have.
Mayor Walker, I have a question. I don't know if it's going to be just for Mr. Blair or for the Verizon rep, but I just want to clarify. So, we don't have any policy that requires a third-party market analysis for these kinds of situations?
No, we don't.
I mean, could we?
Not for small cell facilities.
Could we just have a blanket policy at some point about having third-party review? Because it came up, you know, when we had a situation where the developer engineer that was wanting to develop a parcel of land was also the one that said that they didn't need to change the theme and map for floodplain. And it hit me there that maybe we should have a policy where there is, whenever there's an issue like that, that there is a third party that comes in to actually determine the facts. So, right now, this is just something that would be optional on the part of the person proposing the rent reduction.
For these particular types of facilities, the council could set a policy. Now, the state legislation did, in fact, mandate that certain small cell facilities, on certain facilities such as utility poles, the city has to allow. But as far as, if you're asking about, could the city develop a policy to require a third-party analysis for leases that weren't affected by that legislation? The council certainly can enact and request staff to enact such policy.
Thank you.
I think the only thing to add for the council's benefit is when Verizon approached us about this facility six years ago, I believe. They proffered the amount of $9,000 per month. We accepted without negotiation. You know, it's unknown what the marketplace is for this. Mr. Engel did try and investigate that. I'm sure that it is somewhat less valuable based on the legislation, although I would imagine that based on this installation, that they have somewhat different equipment than you could put on a telephone pole.
So, we don't know the... I mean, I know we have these three options, but staff isn't recommending one of...
Be Mr. Engel's contention that, you know, the original amount is appropriate. We have the Verizon rep here. I imagine that you should ask her some questions about how and why they arrived at that amount and make a determination. I would say that also, Mr. Engel's conveyed that, you know, as far as this arrangement goes, Verizon's been a good partner, and they've done everything that we've were asked as part of the agreement.
Okay. So, are you doing... Hello?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Lorie Schweller. I'm an attorney with Williams Mullen, representing Verizon Wireless. And I'd just like to say thank you for allowing Verizon Wireless to lease this space. This is one of the first small cells in Virginia. At least, the lease was between City of Charlottesville and Verizon Wireless in 2013. And based on installation, this will expire at the end of May, if not renewed. So, we're asking for your renewal for another five years. The rent reduction is based on the following. At the time that the lease was entered into five years ago, market rate was about $500 per small cell per month. And there were some outliers that were maybe $600 a month, but this one was $750, I believe, which was really on the high end. And just to remind you, small cells are very small wireless facilities that are used to provide extra data transmission capacity in areas where people gather. This one happens to be two antennas that look like fluorescent light bulbs within two of the eight glass fixtures on the side of the mall, serving the mall and the pavilion area. Because of the large and ever-increasing numbers of small cells that have been constructed across the state and the country, tens of thousands actually, and that number will be at, I've heard something like 800,000 by 2026, rents have gone down. And as Mr. Blair pointed out, there are lots of other opportunities, and really, the carriers are focused on utility poles now instead of buildings. But we do want to renew this site, for sure. And just to explain, rent has gone down from the $500 or $600 per month down to $100 to $200. That's market now, $100 to $200 per month for small cells. So, even with the reduction that Verizon is requesting, it would be very much on the higher end. But that's the explanation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I think I'm with, you know, Councilor Galvin in terms of not having enough information to support a reduction.
Do we have a public hearing?
Oh, yeah.
It's advertised as such, but there is nobody signed up.
But this could be under clarifying question.
Okay.
Heather. But you're right. So, I'll open the public hearing before our discussion. Is there anyone here that would like to speak? All right, now, closing the public hearing. So, that was it. Just, you know, not having enough information and just getting the information from Verizon, for me, wouldn't support the decrease.
And again, I agree with Mayor Walker. I think we need an independent third party looking at this, and I agree with the staff's recommendation. I'm willing to entertain this again if we had an independent market assessment about these costs, but we have nothing in writing, and it's coming from the applicant.
That's fine.
So, I guess our question to you would be, in terms of approval, is your client desire to have it approved this evening, or do you all want to...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So, we'll just approve the $9,000?
Number two.
Yeah.
What's that? Okay. Is there a motion?
I move the approval of resolution...
B?
Or B?
B.
I'm sorry.
B.
Resolution B.
Okay. I move the approval of Resolution B attached to the council agenda report.
Okay. Got it. Second.
All in favor? Repose?
Oh, wait a minute. Yeah. We voted right.
Did everybody vote?
We voted for B, which was not...
Retain current.
Retain the current. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for coming.
All right, so that carries five to zero. All right, next, we have the city council proposed budget. Here we go. Here we go again.
I believe, based on her tweets, Ms. Congress said that she could give the presentation at this point. If we have a projector that will give a presentation. I'm sure something great's going to happen. There we go. It's a very faint budget presentation. There we are. Okay. I hope it gets so much brighter. There we are. So, over the course of the last several budget meetings, we have reviewed a number of scenarios. And the new revenue between the proposal and where we are today is reimbursement for constitutional officers. This is money in the state budget that has come to the city that we did not know about during the time of the budget construction by the manager's office. I would remind folks that we have presented multiple scenarios during the last budget sessions, and this is the one that council settled on most recently. So, how did we get to the expenditure here with this new money from the state? We also found in the debt service fund that we were able to spend $850,000 less than we had imagined. I've described this in some detail previously. But the essence of it is that there's been a very conservative practice in previous budgets to imagine that all the capital programs that we had authorized in the past but not spent or not issued debt on would happen in the upcoming fiscal year. And the fact is, I'll be with you all in two weeks saying that the only debt that we're going to issue in FY '19 before June 30th is $10.5 million, not over $37 million. That translates to the savings in the payment. How would we expend those dollars? We would add to the CHAP and real estate tax relief in the way that Mayor Walker had actually described earlier to the public. There was already, in the base budget from the city manager's office, $285,000 in new money. We're proposing that another $349,000 be added to that. We also are talking about doubling the current program for rent relief, adding another $26,000. And that, as opposed to the $10.3 million that was going into affordable housing overall in the capital program, that that number go up to $10.55 million. There was a suggestion about some marketing assistance for restaurants as meals tax was being raised. This amount here was arrived at because it's 5% of the new revenues. And there's some adjustments back and forth, small things between departments, some IT expenses, et cetera. So, this details some of the things that the mayor was describing earlier. Basically, you know, just under 1,000 people would benefit from the newly revised CHAP program. There is a full relief area for folks with less than $25,000 in income. The income was adjusted up to $55,000, I would note, for staff in the budget office and Mr. Divers, Commissioner Divers, that we need to change that last category so that it's $45,001, as the mayor pointed out to me earlier. So, Ms. Galvin mentioned earlier that this is inclusive of about 70% of the residential parcels. I think that that's a significant portion. I think that captures, you know, the total investment between these two programs is almost $1.25 million. So, what does that mean as far as what did we do on the capital side? You know, as I said, we ended up adding $255,000 to affordable housing. Of course, we were adding $800,000 to the Affordable Housing Fund in that kind of general application pool that folks had been talking with you about. There is a small adjustment to supplemental rental assistance that I discussed last time. You know, Dr. Bellamy, I've communicated an email to him actually tonight to share with his colleagues at the Housing Authority. I can share that with the rest of the council. Essentially, the reason for this small reduction is a couple reasons. All money that has been spent thus far on the CSRAP, C-S-R-A-P, Charlottesville Supplemental Rental Assistance Program, was actually appropriated by the council in fiscal year '18. And there is some set aside within that. There is $945,000 still available in the year that we're in, so between now and June 30th. And so, with only a quarter to go, knowing that there's $945,000 and that we have all of the rent obligations budgeted for, for between 77 and 82 people, 77 who are housed, 82 who are seeking the right place to live, and knowing that there are 28 people on the waiting list, I think that that, in combination with $3.25 million available only three months from today, would have us sitting nearly $2 million in the pool. And so, I feel very secure in meeting the obligations to everybody currently on the list and those on the waiting list. And, you know, a lot more comfortable with the time that we could serve folks because I believe best practice is to be able to ensure that we can meet an obligation should people need it up to 24 months. The other small adjustment here is to make a change in the year-one allocation to Friendship Court. It still means $5.5 million to that project overall. $10.55 million overall to affordable housing in the 35-plus-million-dollar budget, just in FY '20 for capital improvement. So, this is just a summary of what I've talked about there. Different format, way to look at that. You see that, you know, we're just under $10.6 million. There is an increase overall scenarios that we've presented you with to date. One of the things that the council has talked about a bit is the idea that, you know, typically... typically, there is money that we are able to appropriate each year in December based on when we kind of close the books on FY '19, which ends for us June 30th, and realize that there are additional dollars available because we didn't spend as much as we might have imagined, or we realized more revenues. And what council is articulating here during our budget discussions is, look, there's some stuff that we want to be thinking about in December, and let's say what those things are ahead of time. Put that money back into Friendship Court. Try and fund the Affordable Housing Fund all the way up to the $1.55 million that has been talked about by a lot of folks tonight and throughout the budgeting process. $150,000 back to the rental assistance program. Instead of amortizing the retirement fund costs, pay them upfront, which would be a better practice. And Dr. Bellamy asked last meeting about restoring half a million dollars to the equity fund because you've made a lot of great investments from that fund this year. We did talk at length about a number of issues that we need to address with our compensation. You know, we know that in Lynchburg, just the study of that was a six-figure enterprise. We imagined that it would be at least that here, and that it took them about two years to get to the first phase of implementation. So, imagining that we hear from council and the public tonight, you're slated for approval, City Hall, 2:00 PM next week. As always, you can find all the documents that we've presented throughout the process at charlottesville.org/budget. And I'll happily take any questions from council.
Thanks for your work on this, Mr. Murphy.
Yes, sir.
And Ms. Bogart.
Thank you both.
And the team.
And Ryan. Yeah, that's Aunt Ryan.
Chrissy.
Thanks.
Ryan.
Thank you all. So I think we can just open it up. All right, so gonna open up the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak? No? All right. Do I have a list?
I believe there's street people on the list currently.
Okay.
Including Dr. Bravo.
Good evening, I'm Vicky Bravo. I live at 1135 Locust Avenue, and I'm here tonight representing IMPACT with two of my colleagues. We applaud your work to accomplish major improvements in affordable housing, including planning for record investment in public housing redevelopment, expansion of CHAP, expansion of rental assistance, a plan for $800,000 in the CAF, and a possible additional funding of $755,000 from the surplus. We very much appreciate your hard work on this. We are continuing to press for the $1.55 million in the CAF to cover homelessness services and other services covered by that fund and other affordable housing plans that will come forward. We agree with other speakers on the need for a permanent revenue stream for the CAF. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Payne.
Michael Payne, city resident. I've already stated my position, but I'll say again, I think there is a lot to celebrate in this budget. I think this is a historic budget when it comes to investment in affordable housing, and there is a lot to celebrate in it. But again, I would just reiterate, when thinking about revenues, think long-term. Think about the well over $100 million unfunded CIP projects we currently have, which that does not even include the $50-plus million for the school modernization and expansion and what fiscal position we will be in long-term with unfunded CIP projects, the school modernization expansion, and city staff requests if we're not raising revenues as much as we could. Think, you know, are we just putting it off for a year? Or kicking the can down the road? Or, yeah. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'm Walt Heinecke.
Walt Heinecke, I'm Hurst Street. Again, I do want to echo what's been said about, like, the positive comments. I think that you've done a great job with this budget, moving toward affordable housing. Much appreciated. I think it's a long time coming. It solves a problem that's been a long, long time. 200 years worth of history has led to this particular problem. And I want to encourage you to start thinking long-term on this. And that's where we're gonna have something on the real estate tax in a minute. But I feel like my cup's two-thirds full at this point, and we're getting there. I think oftentimes, we don't think long-term. Like, you know, in the UVA game, it takes a really strong defense to win those games, but you also have to have a strong offense. And I think right now, we're still playing defense by thinking short-term with our funding for affordable housing. And I'll give you an example. Ms. Walker said, no, Ms. Walker, Ms. Carpenter said that she knew of an affordable housing unit right now in which there's been a change of ownership. There's, I think, 40-some-odd people. 46 people who are up for eviction. When they come back, they'll probably face higher rents. And yes, you've increased the rental assistance programs, which is really great. And I think you ought to advertise that. There's money left over because I think people in town don't know about that fund, and we need to advertise it. But my thinking there, my thinking here is that we need to be thinking down the road. And so, long-term, I think you're doing a good job short-term, but let's think what's gonna happen over the next 15 years in terms of the needs that we're gonna have to fill for that, for those over 3,300 units. This isn't gonna go away this year. And so, you know, we have to think about things like, and this is why I think raising the real estate tax is important, is because we have to think about playing offense. And playing offense, in my perspective, means that we have to think about land acquisition. Maybe we buy that apartment building that people are getting kicked out of. Maybe we need $3 million to buy that apartment so we save all of those units, right? And so, maybe the real estate tax helps us put with down payment on buying that unit and helping CRHA or PHA buy that unit. And then, we save that number of 40-some-odd number of folks that are gonna be displaced and facing higher rents. So I think we have to start thinking ahead a little bit and thinking about the next year, and the next year, and the next year, and what you can do now to get prepared for that, those coming years. And I think increasing the real estate tax and thinking about using that money in that way to buy pieces of property that might come onto the market in the next year might be that offensive thinking. And so, I want to encourage you to think that way, to think about a longer-term strategy and make a commitment to a longer-term strategy now. Because the problem has developed over a long period of time, and it's a significant, significant problem in terms of we're just bleeding diversity in this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Thank you, my name's Jake Mooney, I live in the city. So, the $850,000 or so, personally, I'm still not 100% clear on how you found it. I don't know that it's been explained all that well. I might have missed it earlier today. I saw that referred to as a miracle. I think it was Ms. Galvin. Sorry. I was rushing to get here. I can understand how it would feel like a miracle if you're running for office and you sort of, all of a sudden, can appease the affordable housing people without having to raise taxes. I'm not a churchgoer, but what I think would be a miracle would be for people in my demographic who have benefited from property value accumulation in the city to share some of that wealth. And I think that what you're contemplating doing by not raising the tax rate is kind of the opposite of that, actually. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? All right. So, closing public hearing. Mr. Blair, is there anything else we need to do?
No, there will be a vote at the next, I guess, April 8th, I should say, rather than the next regular council meeting.
Any additional comments?
Mia Rock, I'd like to make a comment, if I may, because there's been some questions about the $850,000, the reason why we didn't stay with the 1-1-1 plan. And I just want to review a little bit, at least my thought process and what happened over the course of the month of March. And in March, I believe it was March 14, we had a budget work session where staff had proposed that we were going to be raising, we needed to raise taxes for what was essentially a one-time cash outlay to cover the redevelopment of our assisted and public housing. And I had asked the question, well, when, I don't ever remember when we would raise a tax that would have a permanent, ongoing revenue stream for a one-time cash investment, that why couldn't we use our general fund reserve? And subsequent to that, we had our city's financial consultant come in and say, "That is very bad fiscal policy. You don't raid your reserve fund because that is what gives you the stability in the event of any kind of catastrophe or downturn in the economy." And any business, any business would have at least a three-month reserve to cover their payroll, for example. So I said, "Okay, all right. It seems like there's no other way to do this." We needed to get, at that time, it was a $771,000 difference, and that was the cost of a one-cent increase on the real estate tax rate. Then, we had, I believe it was March 19, we had a work session where our budget staff actually took a really hard look at how we do our bond issuance. So when you have different moments in time when you issue different chunks of the total bonding that you need. And in that process, they understood that they were reserving unnecessarily, keeping from the use of the public for public good, $850,000 in debt service payment. That told me that was $78,000 more than what we were gonna get for this one year with a one-cent real estate tax increase. And we weren't doing something that had historically been not a wise budget policy, which would be raise taxes for one-time cash infusions. So to me, I do believe that human reason and hard work and then getting outcomes that are extremely productive and constructive are, in some sense, a minor miracle. So, that's why I express it the way it was. I was greatly appreciative of staff's hard work because they listened to the way we're agonizing over using a tax increase to cover a one-time cash outlay. Now, having said all that, that does not at all remove what we all know is going to be a long-term commitment that we have to make on housing. We forget all the debates and struggles we had about needing an affordable housing strategy. Several months ago, this council committed close to $1 million to do three things. Finally, complete the comprehensive plan, get a comprehensive affordable housing strategy, and do our zoning overhaul, which has been long overdue. It's been due for about six or seven years. That, to me, is smart planning. So I don't know where we stand on getting that request or proposal out, but we do understand that we need a hard, fast, clear strategy that will tell us what we need to do by way of raising taxes and give us even more tools that we need to use to make our real estate tax more progressive. Just a month ago, we had residents come, person after person, telling us about how that is a hardship. It's a hardship to increase taxes on top of our land values already going up. And we can't ignore the fact that as we give tax relief, we're taking money out of the revenue stream. So all these things need to be understood so that we're not digging ourselves into a hole. So I just felt really important that we needed, I needed to explain why this 1-1-1 plan was no longer needed right now. But we need to get these other studies done, these other strategies put in place so we know exactly what we need to communicate to the public about why we need to raise the taxes and just how much we need to give tax relief because it's very regressive right now.
Okay. And I'll just, you know, add that definitely the commitment on my part is there. You know, I know that we got away with not, you know, maximizing, I guess, our bond potential and even, you know, real estate tax. And if we can create policies that are not harmful to, you know, low-income homeowners too, then, and I think we can do both, that is definitely what I will keep, you know, pushing for. So, it's, we're definitely not at the end. We're just at the, you know, beginning of this process. All right. All right, so that's it. Okay. Next, we have the annual tax levy for calendar year 2019, first of two readings. Who's the presenter? Is that just?
Not really.
No additional presentation, Mayor Walker. Yes, you held your public hearing at the March 18th meeting on the real estate tax rate. So there's no, this is more just the ordinances before you in case you wanted any additional discussion.
Is there counsel, any additional discussion? All right. So, annual budget appropriations for fiscal year 2020, any additional discussion? No. All right. And, oh, I did have one comment. The 8th at 2:00, I'm gonna have to use that as one of my call-ins. One of my two, right? So I'll be out of town for personal reasons, but I will call in at 2:00 to vote on the budget.
I'll get with the clerk.
Okay. All right, so next we have, this is looking really good. Just wanted to say that. The Ravenna Water and Sewer Authority Quarterly Update.
Thank you, Mayor. I was hoping that was for my presentation. I'm Bill Moore, you're the executive director of the Ravenna Water and Sewer Authority and the Ravenna Solid Waste Authority. And as you may know, we provide the drinking water systems, the wastewater treatment systems, refuse disposal, and recycling systems for Alamoale County, the city of Charlottesville. And so, as we come into 2019, I'm pleased to say that our reservoirs are full of water, and that's really good news. We have over $2.5 billion gallons in our three reservoirs that serve the urban area, so that's a good thing. The granular activated carbon filters that we completed last year for about $29 million are doing a great job in removing organics and contaminants from our drinking water and continue to enhance our drinking water. It was mentioned in solid waste that we would discontinue recycling number three through seven plastics, and that's correct. We will recycle number one and two plastics, which constitute about 90% of our plastics recycling stream. The three through seven, we found, were eventually going to a landfill out of state and not really being recycled. So we didn't see the purpose in going to the effort of trying to recycle and spend money in the pretext of recycling when they weren't really being recycled. So, we want to monitor the market and try to optimize all of our systems. For budget comparison, so the Ravenna's working on its water and sewer budget. Our budget's about $30,000. Our budget's about $36 million for our operating budget and about $97 million for our five-year capital improvement budget. So we are very debt-heavy, because we provide all the major infrastructure. The debt service cost is about 47% of our operating budget. So I mentioned that. I did send you the written report with the water flows, the wastewater flows, for your information, as well a brief summary of some of the major capital projects that we have planned for the upcoming year or two. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Otherwise, I have two short videos to show you about two of our major capital projects on our South Ravanna Water Treatment Plant, which produces most of the water for what we call the urban area, the city and the urbanized areas of the county. As well, we have a project at the Observatory Hill Water Treatment Plant. And so those are planned to go forward later this year for costs of about $35 million. And that cost is shared between the city and the Alamo County Service Authority. The city's share is approximately about 48% of that cost. Okay, so, let's start with South Ravanna, if we could, please.
The set system is comprised of a source water reservoir, raw and finished water pumping facilities, water treatment plant, and water storage tanks, all serving over 110,000 citizens and businesses in the city of Charlottesville, including UVA and urban areas of Alamo County. The South Ravanna Reservoir was built in 1966 and currently provides about 850 million gallons of usable water storage. Water from the South Ravanna Reservoir is treated at the South Ravanna Water Treatment Plant, which has the capacity to process 12 million gallons of finished water per day. The South Ravanna Water Treatment Plant is the largest of the three urban plants. A project to add granular activated carbon filters at all of our water treatment plants was recently completed to enhance the quality of our drinking water. Additional plant improvements have been identified and will be accomplished in a construction project starting in the fall of 2019, with completion scheduled for 2023. These improvements include an expansion of the chemical storage laboratory and process control facilities, installation of two additional filters, replacement of pumping and electrical equipment, and additional building to increase office, training, and storage areas. These upgrades will improve reliability of the plant and maintain the current treatment capacity. The estimated budget to complete these improvements is currently $15 million.
Any questions about that project, the South Ravanna Water Treatment Plant, which is out past Walmart near the Ravanna River and the reservoir? And we're going to bundle that project with this project of the Observatory Mountain Water Treatment Plant.
The Observatory Water Treatment Plant is the oldest of the three urban plants. The plant was constructed in 1953 and is located on the grounds of the University of Virginia. Since that time, very little of the plant has been replaced or upgraded. The 65-year-old facility operates with much of the original equipment, which is prone to failures, and replacing parts are not readily available. The Observatory Water Treatment Plant receives raw water from Ragged Mountain Reservoir and has capacity to provide 7.7 million gallons per day of finished water to cover 110,000 residents and businesses in the city of Charlottesville, including UVA and urban areas of Alamo County. The Ragged Mountain Reservoir was improved in 2014 and currently provides 1.5 billion gallons of usable water storage. The community water supply plan developed from 2002 to 2012 envisioned that this plant would undergo a comprehensive upgrade as part of the strategy to provide an adequate water supply for 50 years. Included in this project are improvements to the flocculators, filters, conveyance flumes, sedimentation basins, electrical and chemical systems, all to enhance the reliability of the plant. In addition to providing much-needed equipment replacements, the existing plant will also upgrade from 7.7 to 10 million gallons per day in treatment capacity. Upgrading the plant will support future increases in water demand and enable the urban water supply system to withstand or recover from difficult natural man-made conditions. Budget to complete this project is currently $20 million. Construction will begin in 2019 with a completion date scheduled for 2023.
Okay, so the Observatory Plant is on property owned by the university, and a lease was put in place in 1922 and expires in 2021 around the corner. So we are in negotiations with the UVA to renew the 99-year lease with another 99-year lease. So sort of different, to have a 99-year lease come to an end. So we're working on that. But again, these are two of the biggest projects we have that'll be going forward later this year. The city, through a contract and an agreement put in place in 2003, has agreed to pay 48% of renovations to existing facilities. If there's new capacity created, such as where we're going to raise the capacity at Observatory from 7.7 million gallons a day in treatment capacity to 10, then we have to get a new agreement. And we're talking with the Service Authority and your utilities department about that agreement now. So, any questions that I could answer about what's going on at Ravanna?
I guess some of the things that have come up with the public is just understanding the, just the strategy. Now, we've talked about this in years past, around why we're putting so much investment into capacity that doesn't seem like it's necessary at this time. So could you just speak to that for the public's sake, please?
Well, capacity is something that we have to have in advance. We can't need it and suddenly go out and build a larger water treatment plant or a new reservoir. It takes years and decades to plan in advance. And so, as a matter of fact, we're doing a study right now of the urban area water demand for the next 50 years. And it's an update to this study that was done in 2010 to help us project how much water we do need, and it looks at all the facts. How much water are we using? The graph that I give you here, what's the five-year average, what's the average, what is projected for the next 50 years? And then we have to match our water supply capacity in our reservoirs. Do we have enough reservoir capacity to provide what's going to be needed in 2050? Then we have to think about building the water treatment plants to treat it. And thirdly, we have to enhance the piping systems to distribute it throughout the city and the county to get it to the customers. So we work in really a long-range planning. Pipes, we expect to last 80 to 100 years. Treatment plants, 100 years. And so while today, one might say, well, our demand is low, we've had a lot of rain, the reservoirs are full, we don't need to think about supplying capacity. Maybe that's true right now, but in 2017, we had a drought. In 2001, was almost a drought of record, that the stories are told that they were at the verge of telling the university to send the students home. So I was at a conference last week that talked about extreme weather events have been more frequent in the last 12 years than they were in prior decades. So we try to assimilate all this data when we look at demand studies and supply. And even though it might not be clear today, or last year, or the next six months, we're trying to plan ahead. And yes, we are putting the pipe out at Birdwood. Part of that was in coordination with their renovation of the golf course. They have it torn up, and we wanted to get this pipe installed before they finished all their work at the golf course. And then at some point, I came to this council a few months ago and told you about the project that's already been approved in the Community Water Supply Plan to extend the pipe from the South Ravanna Reservoir over to Ragged Mountain, so we have a better way to fill Ragged Mountain. And if you noticed in the videos, the rock on the water side of the dam, so that's 12 more feet of water that that dam and that reservoir is designed to add 12 feet of water to increase our water supply. But we currently fill it with a trickling pipe from Sugar Hollow that puts in 4 million gallons a day, but when you have 2 billion gallon capacity, it takes a long time to fill it. So the concept in the Community Water Supply Plan was to build a pipe between the South Ravanna Reservoir and the Ragged Mountain Reservoir, and we could pump 25 million gallons a day over to Ragged to keep it full. Part of the planning issue is not only a drought, but if we had back-to-back droughts and a reservoir got low, could you refill it? So, did that speak to it enough? Thank you. Okay.
So I have a question about, so UVA, how are they fitting into the equation in terms of, so you said there was a 2003 contract?
1920 contract of release.
For the 99, but I'm...
Yes, ma'am.
But there was some, you mentioned a 2003...
Agreement.
Agreement, okay, with the city and county.
Yeah.
And where was UVA in that, during that discussion?
Happy to answer, but you know, UVA is a customer of the system and also maintains some of their own infrastructure. So they have underground infrastructure, their own water system in a good number of the areas of grounds, but they are rate payers to the city's system.
And I'm just thinking about, I know that we're increasing the amount that they are paying in terms of, for water usage, and that was that 1984 agreement. But I was just wondering, since that conversation just started taking place, were we comfortable with previous agreements and their role in this equation too? So just thinking about that.
Yes, ma'am, I think so. The early agreement had wrapped together the rate structure with the city on, and that you guys have renegotiated. It also had this lease component rolled together, because originally, the lease was with the city. And then when Ravanna was born in the 1970s, the city turned over the Observatory Plant and effectively the lease of the facility to us. We pay the rent on the facility, $36,000 a year right now. So it was discussed that we should separate these components of that document, and the city and UVA have, I understand, a new contract about water rates, and then we're going to have a separate contract with the university on leasing the facility. But as Mr. Murphy said, they continue to be your customer, and so we make all the drinking water for everyone. So we sell it to the city, you sell it to UVA, we sell it to the Alamo County Service Authority, they serve all the Alamo County public utility users. So, and UVA has some of their own piping, but they don't have any water treatment or wastewater treatment. Neither does the city, neither does the county. By design, we manage, we have all of that infrastructure.
So UVA wasn't paying their full rate and they were charging a rent?
It was in the contract that a rent would be paid. So that is a topic of negotiation now in the new, in the new contract, especially on the heels of the city-UVA new contract, of paying full market rate.
All right, that's where I was going. So, all right.
Madam Mayor, a question. This is, Mr. Murphy, I just, in my time on council, I don't think we've, we haven't, I don't think, done a large infrastructure, direct, capital-funded project. And we've done, you know, like fire engines, some other very expensive things, and we purchased real estate. But so I, this is my lack of familiarity, but so with, and this is with respect and just wanting to know, but with, thinking about large infrastructure projects around the country where you have oftentimes round numbers and the figures are very large, I'm curious about what, I understand that there is a fiduciary duty within the governing board to make sure that the figures are correct and narrowly tailored and so on. But I'm curious, and I know that, you know, nobody's getting paid more if there's, you know, a large expense, but I'm just curious about what's our, what's within, what is our fiduciary role to make sure that the budgets are correct with very large infrastructure projects? Because sometimes they do run over. Sometimes you do see bridges become much more expensive than they should have been. Sometimes you see public contracts have X variables in them that maybe could have been prevented ahead of time. And I'm curious, you know, you see the figure $20 million, you see, I'm just curious about what are our checks going into this?
So the city places three people on the water and sewer side of the board. Ms. Galvin, myself, and Ms. Hildebrand currently serve in that role. The county has three folks also, and there's a citizen rep that you jointly appoint, who happens to be the chair for some time now, Mr. Gaffney. And so there is quite a bit of presentation to that group about all of the capital projects. And I would point out that, you know, there have been some projects we've questioned. I asked a lot of questions about Birdwood recently. And as I recall, that was actually a project that came in less than half of what they had imagined it might. So there is certainly a lot of scrutiny about the bids, and Mr. Moyer and his staff do a great job presenting to the board members about that.
And there is an annual audit?
Yes.
Just as we go through?
Okay.
And it's reported to us, and we see it?
And we follow the Virginia Public Procurement requirements, so we have to public advertise and get the low bidder and sealed bidding, so we follow all those procedures. We have a value engineering program, like this big project of the two treatment plants. We're having an independent engineer look over our primary engineer's shoulder and make recommendations for how to be more value-added, not necessarily cheaper, but value-added. I mean, it can be cheaper, but we want a good facility that lasts and doesn't give us operation and maintenance headaches.
That's very, very helpful here. And I know, you know, even at the city level, we have very robust procurement rules that are a lot stronger than in a lot of other states, for instance. But, yeah, so I really, I think that reiterating that wherever possible for the public, given the size, will be helpful.
I would also point out that, you know, as we talk about water, sewer, gas rates every year with the council, that that's also an opportunity to understand in that rate report, that the rate payers do pay for big projects like Mr. Moyer's talking about tonight on the city side.
And if I could bring out, too, that the public has weighed in very heavily in certain decisions. And one of them was, you saw pictures of the granular activated carbon treatment method. And back four years ago, the city was about, and the city and the county and Alma County Sewer Authority were all about to proceed with just adding chloramines, a chemical that had been found in some places to combine with the byproducts and create adverse reactions to the community as well as the surrounding wildlife. And when, I believe when I got on the board, it wasn't clear to me what public process had been used, and there wasn't a very clear, open public process. We opened the public process up. Long story short, all four boards were given information by the public. We want to do this in a way that doesn't threaten the health and safety of our families and our planet. And this community opted, it was, we filled the whole room in Alma County Office Building that to go with a more expensive way to treat our water, but was one that the public would trust to drink. And so I just want to say that this community has, over and over again, opted for quality and safety. And I might add that one of the advisors on that was the person that later would find out all the problems with Flint, Michigan. We do not have any of those problems, and it's because of the expertise of this really professional organization. So thank you.
Yes, thank you, because it is important enough to be cost-effective. We try to do our best, but relative to the Flint, we don't take shortcuts that would compromise the quality of our water or our drinking wastewater, or our wastewater treatment. And by the way, the Birdwood Waterline Project, the city's share is 20% of that project. The Alamo County Service Authority pays 80% of that project. The entire pipeline from Ravanna to Ragged Mountain is 80% funded by the Service Authority.
And in terms of growth and our projections for accommodating affordable housing, so the water supply plan was based on a growth projection of the city of 72,000 people. That was through the AECom engineering firm. And that is what provides us with the infrastructure to create the supply to accommodate that future population out to 2060. So that's, if some of you may remember too, we had a long conversation with some of our planning commissioners. Can we go beyond? Can we go beyond, you know, some of the visions that were presented to us with the con plan and it's like 150,000 people? So we have to be aware of these things. And then, but I will say that, you look at Weldon Cooper's growth projections for 2040 is putting us at 55,000. Well, we're at 49,000 now. And if we build those 3,000, build those 1,200 units of housing that the 2018 report said we needed, well, that the hack distilled from that 2018 report, that's 3,000 more people like within the next couple of years. So that means we're going to be hitting the Weldon Cooper growth projections in 2022, not 2040. So we are, we are growing, and we have to accommodate more people to get the affordable housing we need. So anyway, I just wanted to clarify that, and I have been on the board, so I feel an obligation to explain some of these things, because I've, I had the history as well by seeing all this data, all these studies, all this strategic planning that we need to do for things like affordable housing, street improvements, you name it, education. So again, thank you for that.
Thank you.
And I have another question about the plastics three through seven.
Yes, ma'am.
So how did you all determine where it was, where they were ending up, and are you using the same company?
We're still using the same company. They go to a company called Sunoco at, near Lynchburg, and then they package them and send them to North Carolina somewhere. So our solid waste manager's been doing some investigating and calling and looking into it, and that's his belief that they were not being landfill, I mean, they were not being recycled further down the stream. And I think I heard today that Harrisonburg, I believe, stopped recycling number three through seven plastics today, so...
Is that related to the Chinese policy of taking any order?
The China effect, as we call it, that a lot of, almost all the recyclings in the country were going to China, and they have changed their rules and they're accepting only a very, very small percentage of what they used to. So there's no, there are few places to send a lot of recyclable products, such as plastics. Glass is becoming a bit questionable. You know, the paper is still pretty, newspaper recycled, cardboard is good, recycle them, aluminum cans, that's a good product. But the plastics and the glasses are not becoming so marketable. And just as an FYI, the recycling program loses money every year. So it's subsidized by you and the county every year. We don't break even on the recyclable product.
How much does it lose roughly?
Several hundred thousand dollars. I can get you the exact number. I know we sent the county a bill today for 314,000 for their quarterly dues for all of the programs that they support, and I think your bill was about $86,000. So, for a quarter. So that's your contribution to maintaining the old landfill area that we have to do environmental protection out there. So it's not just recycling, but that's part of it. Yes, ma'am?
I'm just still trying to just wrap my head around where, you know, landfill versus recycling and what we're doing, I guess, you know, not just local, but state and national level to resolve that. So just, I guess you may not have those answers, sorry.
Well, you know, we haven't landfilled anything since the late 1990s, and so everything now goes through a transfer station. So people still bring it to the landfill, and the county funded, and we built a brand-new building that opened in September. The transfer station, it's got a concrete floor with a hole at one end, and the trucks come in and dump their trash on the floor, and our tractor pushes it in the hole, and there's a truck down below, and it goes in the truck, and then we ship it out, and it goes to Amelia County landfill, the Amelia landfill, because they were the low bidder on taking it. So that's how we transfer. We don't bury any refuse at Ivy anymore.
And Mr. Moyer, could you please share with us why we can't put solar panels on the landfill? We attempted to do that, and what was the reason why that didn't work?
We had a firm contact us who was a backup. So Virginia Power, the General Assembly required Virginia Power to support alternate energy projects. And so they committed to create so many megawatts of solar and wind-powered power for the state. And so they were soliciting companies to propose both of those types of projects, solar or wind power. And so this company, actually from Maryland, came to us and said they wanted to put together a project, could they use our landfill, rent space at the landfill? Our board agreed, and we said, "Yes, you can do it." They proposed a project to Virginia Power, but it was not accepted in that program, and that's why it didn't happen.
So it was just a matter of a policy from Virginia Power?
That Virginia Power got enough projects they needed to meet their need, and this was not one of them.
So there's nothing, no technical reason why that couldn't work?
No.
Because it was a great, great use of land area.
Yes, and we did get a call from them recently to say, "Hey, this is not totally dead. Virginia Power may have another round of projects that they do," and they were going to reapply again.
Oh, great.
So we haven't given up. It's not happening yet, but it could happen.
Great.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other business? No? Gone five? So, the matters by the public, is there anyone who would like to speak? Nope? All right. So, meet and adjourn.
All right.
All right.